Okay.
Okay, I'd like to announce that this meeting will be recorded and posted to the Township Video website. You can submit public comment by email to glipincott@westrockhill township.org. We will take public comment until the end of the meeting. And we will read the public comment prior to the vote or at the end of the meeting, depending on what is appropriate. Thank you. All right, let's start off by welcoming everybody to the February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three Board of Supervisors meeting. And I would like to ask for a let's see, public comment? Nope, I gotta go back to, I gotta go back to Pledge of Allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, public comments on the agenda items, if you have any, please state your name and address. I don't see any on my screen. Okay, will we, will we, excuse me?
None via email.
Okay, thanks. Announcements, executive session was held on February second, twenty twenty-three to discuss real estate matters. The consent agenda, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes, win plan review, status, escrow, release and vouchers, emergency services report, building zoning and building permit report, public works report, tax collector's report, treasures report, payment bills. Greg, would you read the treasure report, please?
Sure, the general fund has six hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-one cents. Highway aid, five thousand, five hundred and six dollars and nineteen cents. Open space, one million, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, four hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-eight cents. The park fund, forty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-two cents. The equipment fund, one thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-five, twenty-five cents. Highway capital, one hundred and thirty-two, ten. Street light, thirty-five thousand, six dollars and twenty-nine cents. The reserve funds, general fund reserve, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. The American Rescue Plan Fund, five hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and thirty-eight cents. Open Space Manderfield, forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty cents. Sewage Maintenance Fund, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, forty-one dollars and forty cents. The Stormwater Fund, eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-three cents. And the escrow funds, two million, four hundred thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Okay, I do have one question for you, Greg, regarding the Manderfield funds. Are we, are we anticipating spending any more money on trees? Do we have any issues with trees there that we gotta take down? Or are we pretty, is it, I know we're below what we used to have, used to be around fifty thousand, but I think we did spend some of that for that, for tree removal. Is that correct?
Sure, we started off with tree removal and the James Park and around the facility, and then we went to the Manderfield. And then last year, we went out around the Catch Basin property and down Hayflick Trail. So that was done two year, a year and a half ago on the Manderfield. So no, there is no more anticipated cutting down, though we do go out and check it once in a while to make sure.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, if isn't, is there any other questions regarding the funds? It's presented by Greg. If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Uh, so move David Collingwood.
Okay, motions been made for approval of the consent agenda. I will second it, although signify by saying aye. Aye. I just have it. Thank you, Greg. Moving forward. Next on the agenda is confirmed appointments. I do not see any confirmed appointments on my screen. Following up here, the next is the committee reports. First on there is the Planning Commission Report, Mr. Chris Durstein, welcome.
Uh, thank you, everyone. Planning Commission met last night. Uh, we had one applicant. It was Triple Net Investments. You guys are all aware of this project. They are proposing to construct a three hundred and sixty-three thousand square foot industrial warehouse on a roughly thirty acre tract that's being subdivided off of the Drager property on Quarry Road. It's in the PI District Plant Industrial. Used to be a G three wholesale business and warehouse as well as an H three accessory outside storage. Um, and they were proposing, they're, they wanna build this on as a spec project, so they have no tenants as of yet. Um, we had pretty lengthy discussion on landscape buffers, parking area shading and forestation. They cannot supply enough trees for parking lot shade due to the nature of the business, the, the truck parking and traffic area just doesn't allow for, for islands or what for, whatnot for shading. And also can't feasibly plant enough saplings to meet the forestation requirements due primarily to stormwater control efforts. They, they're doing a large, part of their stormwater control is a spray irrigation system, so they can't really have any plantings there. They have underground holding tanks and, and things that you can't grow trees on. Um, so like I said, we had some pretty good discussion on that. So as far as the shading, they agreed to use white roofing materials and concrete rather than asphalt, uh, which would reduce the, the thermal effects that the, the sheet, the tree shading is meant to accomplish. They also agreed to use some of the, the deficit number of trees uh, to further buffer most of the property line. They were only gonna buffer certain areas and we felt these trees could be used to, good use to just buffer most of the perimeter of, of the property. Which seemed to make some of the concerned neighbors a little uh, happier than when they showed up. They also agreed to a, a light dimming system. They're gonna have twenty-four hour lighting there, you know, full cutoff lights, but they agreed to do a, a dimming system that would only, only trigger when there's activity in the lots. As far as traffic, you've all heard the traffic studies. We're still waiting on, on a couple of reviews, I think. There, there was no trigger for the need for a traffic light at Quarry and State. Um, but they are planning to widen both the corners of Quarry and also install a left turn lane. Um, you know, this, this is a condensed version of what happened last night. It was a pretty lengthy meeting. Um, they're, they're gonna clean up the plan, insert the buffering effects that we had discussed and as well as some other outstanding items. Um, so the project was stable for now. PC took no action last night, but they will be back. Uh, so that's it for Triple Net for now, if you have any questions.
I had none. Mr. Collingwood, you have any?
No, I, I, I attended the meeting. I, I, again, um, I think it's a good meeting, buffering, traffic control, uh, the lights and, and lighting seem to be the biggest concern. I thought there's a really good dialogue between some of the neighbors and some of the um, local residents. And that seems like it's gonna continue with Triple Net, I mean, before the next meeting. So I think that's, it's a good thing because the, the meeting actually went better, smoother than I thought, uh, than I expected last evening. I, I thought it was pretty amicable being a meeting with everybody involved. Good meeting.
Yeah, I would agree if you did. You brought us some good points there, but I do agree, they, they're, they're willing, trying to work with the, with the neighboring properties. So that was it for them. Um, so we also had continuing with this discussion on the comp plan initiatives. We've been focusing on, on some overlay ideas to further protect some of the natural resources in the township and um, John Sweraduk has, has really been digging in and doing a lot of research and he, at this point, he's concerned that he wants to make sure that the Board of Supervisors, you guys are on board with him continuing this. Or he feels like he's gonna be wasting his time if, if you guys don't wanna continue. So what he agreed to do, um, he's gonna put a memo together, uh, for you guys for next month to, uh, review what we've come up with and, and give us some direction as to whether it's something you'd like to support and, and pursue. So at some point, beginning something from John.
Okay, that sounds like a good idea. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, thank John. He's, he's
John has spent a lifetime working on this stuff and it's appreciated and I look forward to saying his memo before the next.
Yeah, yeah, definitely we can get it worked out. So that's all we had. That's my report.
Yeah, probably. No, sorry, apology for being a little bit late, but yes, John has put a lot of time and effort into this, so it's, uh, much appreciated.
Okay, with that being said, I will entertain a motion for approval of the Planning Commission Report as presented. I'll make that motion. I need a second.
Second, David Collingwood.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those signify by saying aye. Aye, I just have it.
Aye.
All right, next on the committee reports is the Park and Rec, Mr. Dave Rice.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Great.
Good baseball weather. Hey, apologize missing the last month, but good thing is middle school baseball's moving forward, so that's the win. Uh, let's see, fishing derby, that's coming up real soon. We got two months from today, actually, yes, two months from today, April fifteenth from nine to twelve. Looking forward to having another successful year like every single year before, with the exception that one year we would, could not hold it, but everybody comes out to do, um, for the fishing derby. It's a great day, kids have a great time and then the adults and everybody else has a great time after the fishing derby with their licenses, of course. Um, that's from nine to twelve, April fifteenth. We got movie in the park night, so we changed the idea and that's where I come to Board of Supervisors for questions, comments, feature film and a fire. So here's what we thought. We were thinking of maybe like a bonfire and a film, maybe we could have, you know, more um, relatable to maybe adults, more like a, I don't know, something where they could have fun and just kinda chuckle and see. So that's why we're entertaining ideas for those questions and comments to your concerns. I know Greg's concerns probably are, you know, the fire and having facilities and making sure that we can accommodate if there's any fires and the dryness of, you know, the weather and all that stuff. Um, I can continue and then we can go back to that if you don't mind. Okay, September, September twenty-first, or September twenty-fourth, September Fest. So we're looking to, forward to another successful year. We're getting, uh, making moves for the right directions for the right sponsors, just like we always do. We have a lot of great entertainment. Um, we have a lot of great people that show up and we're looking for some little bit better weather. We had a little bit of rain last year, but we're looking forward to, um, another successful September Fest. Um, we have two new openings. We still have a full-time, uh, position for a parking rec member. You gotta love it. We're the best committee in the township. Sorry, Chris, but that's, we'll take credit for that. And then, uh, we have one, uh, alternate for the positions of, uh, Parker Rec members. Uh, we have a great time. We enjoy doing things for the community, so if you're interested, um, reach out to Greg at the Township. They have some, uh, applications you can fill out and Greg'd be happy to, uh, share that with us and we'd be happy to, uh, entertain you to join our committee. We'll go back to feature film and a fire if, if you like.
Thanks, very good. Anybody have any questions for Dave on the fire, Peter Fire, or future film and a fire in the park?
My only comment, I think safety has to be paramount, and I'm, I'm sure they'll, they'll address that and they've got some time to do that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I even, I even think depending on how dry it is, it could be a last minute call on whether we have fire or not.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yep, I would, I would like to actually reserve that for the supervisor's decision, you know, at the, at the time, time come. But I do know that we have, we do have the proper steps we could take, you know, there's, there's plenty of, uh, help from fire departments that serve our township that would probably give us some guidance or whatever they need to do. Okay? Any major concerns? Go ahead, Hal.
We do a pond there, so we can kind of preemptively make sure that the area has been wetted down, just to make sure. But yeah, well, we have enough fire guy, enough firemen around who are, I'm sure will lend their expertise to give us some better direction that week, that day.
Okay, Dave, once again, what's the date on it?
Uh, that is July, I'm sorry, I didn't say that. Um, it's July twenty-ninth.
July twenty-ninth, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Make a note. All right, any other questions or concerns regarding the parking rec? Are you, are you done, Dave? Are you still moving on?
Yes, I am. I am, thank you.
All right. If not, I'll
Make a motion to, uh, to accept the parking rec report as presented.
Okay.
I will second, and I will second that motion.
Second, great. I just wanna add one thing, Dave. We, we have had donations that already have been turned into the township, except for the fishing derby, so uh, things are working out well.
Excellent, thank you, as always.
All right, with the, yep, with the motion made and seconded, all those signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, I just have it. Moving forward from the Park and Rec, next on the committee reports is the Conservation Committee Report, Mr. Michael Trammire.
Uh, thank you. Our Conservation Committee meeting was held on January nineteenth. And the highlights are, uh, Township Newsletter map, the updated protected parks and open space resources map with distinctive colors will appear in spring twenty twenty-three newsletter. And we're hoping that the, uh, the color scheme makes things a little bit easier to read. Uh, open space signs, the acreage ovals are not yet completed by the manufacturer. When they are available, the acreage ovals will be applied to the existing preserved property signs. On trails and linkages, Greg asked the Conservation Committee to assume focus on trails and linkages as part of our our work on the, um, committee. And I guess our first step was we listened to a presentation by Justin, I hope I get the last name right, Giannotti, the project engineer representing Triple Net Trails with a trail plan for trail extension from the Lutheran Community's existing trail system to link Quarry Road and State Road. This trail is part of West Rock Hill zoning requirements for trails and linkages in their minor subdivision and land development plan on thirty acres of land owned by North American Drager. So it called, the plan that, uh, he presented calls for an asphalt-lined trail with benches and trees to circumnavigate the warehouse and then it connects with Lutheran Community's existing trail system. Uh, the Conservation Committee unanimously supported Mr. Giannotti's proposal. On the spring newsletter topics, the Conservation Committee submitted articles for a goodbye and a thank you to your call upon our resignation from the Conservation Committee. Uh, we put the introduction to the new protected parks, open space resources map. And then we have a general article on the Township's conservation work over the past twenty-five years. So that should all appear in the spring newsletter. Our Conservation Committee meetings are held on the third Thursday of odd numbered months at seven PM and posted on the Township website. Our next meeting is on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions elsewise for, uh, Mr. Trammire? Okay, that being
No questions.
That being said, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the Conservation Committee Report.
Oh, I'll move to approve the Council Report.
I'll second David.
David, you got it second? All those signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
I just have, thank you, Mr. Trammire. I lost my, okay. I lost my screen. Am I, I was looking at the agenda. Anyway, I know what's up next. Next on the agenda is the Regional Penridge Regional Police Department report from Chief. Chief. Welcome.
Good evening. I have the January twenty twenty-three activity report for the Penridge Regional Police Department. For the month of January, the police department responded to eight hundred and fifty-four calls for service. Of those calls, three hundred and fifty-two of them are in East Rock Hill Township and five hundred and two of them were in West Rock Hill Township. Uh, we handled twenty-six traffic crashes in January. Nine of those were reportable. The remaining seventeen were non-reportable with nine occurring in East Rock Hill Township and seventeen in West Rock Hill Township. Officers responded to fifteen Part One crimes and twenty-six Part Two crimes, only forty-one crimes for the month. Uh, Part One crimes are your more serious index crimes, while your Part Two crimes are your minor crimes. Uh, there were three crimes for the month of January twenty twenty-three. East Rock Hill Township, we had one domestic assault, one burglary, four reports of theft, two assaults, two frauds, five narcotics complaints, three harassment complaints, two reports of a disturbance. And we had two violations of local ordinances, uh, one dog law violation and one fireworks violation. West Rock Hill Township reported crimes. Uh, we also had one domestic assault there, three thefts reports. Excuse me, one assault, one criminal mischief, one sex offense against a minor, uh, one harassment, one DUI, one public drunk, three reports of a disturbance, two trespassing complaints and one, uh, five local ordinance uh, violations, and they were all dog law violations. Uh, criminal charges filed the month of January, three, forty-eight total charges were filed. Four of them were for drug possession. Four of them were, were for possession of drug paraphernalia, nine arrests, uh, nine charges of assault, seven charges of harassment, eight charges of disorderly conduct, one public drunk arrest, two arrests for trespassing, five arrests for recklessly endangering another person, one violation of the, in an, in an, yeah, ignition interlock system, one charge of strangulation, one charge of witness intimidation, one charge of robbery, uh, one charge of theft, one charge of terroristic threats and a charge of false imprisonment. Um, other police activities for the month of January, a hundred and ninety-three traffic enforcement details were conducted. We issued forty-nine traffic citations and eighty-two traffic warnings. Uh, twenty-six school checks were conducted, a hundred and twenty-three park checks were conducted, four foot patrols and officers attended two hundred and thirty-three hours of training. Um, so far for this year, um, we've handled eight hundred and fifty-four calls for service, twenty-six traffic crashes, uh, forty-one offenses. We filed forty-eight criminal charges and we, like I said, our officers attended two hundred and thirty-three hours of training. Um, if you compare those numbers with twenty twenty-two, that, some of them are pretty significant increases in activity by the police department. Um, and that would be the January twenty twenty-three activity report.
Thank you. Chief, I do wanna point out to you, I do appreciate the, uh, the visual site of police officers in our park. So I took notice to that, uh, recently. I just wanted to thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the chief on the police report or can we have a motion for approval?
David Collingwood, I have a question, chief. Uh, under other police activities, you're, you still continue to do, uh, residence, uh, house checks if people are on holiday or vacation, right?
Uh, yes, we do house checks, Mr. Collingwood.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
That's it, only question. I, uh, with that, if Mr. Shimer has something, I'd make a recommendation to accept the police report as presented.
Well, uh, one quick, just, uh, one question or one first thank you to, uh, Penridge Police Department. We have the security cameras back up and running over at Holiday House, but thank you for some of the, uh, consultation from one of the officers and thank you guys for circling back around. Uh, the other one is if, when, you know, I know that it's a constant concern, but since I already had somebody doing the kamikaze head-on, uh, passing across the double yellow line this afternoon, coming back to the house. But again, suggested it might be time to have somebody in one of the black and whites sitting towards the end of Thousand Acre Road, picking up everybody who decides to do the kamikaze turn or kamikaze passing somewhere between Thousand Acre Road and County Line Road, because I think we're now up like seven or eight new telephone poles for people who don't make it or people who aren't paying attention and drive off. But for whatever reason, it, we need some more, uh, reminders that yes, when the W O line means don't pass and the double, and the white line. So otherwise, uh, no questions and I will second David's mention, uh, motion.
Okay, the motion made and seconded. Chief, can you look into that? Make sure we get a little visual.
I'll see what I can do to get more activity out there. It's a difficult location there, Hal. The problem is the road's very winding. There's nowhere for the officers to sit safely. So, but we can look into it. I'll try to get someone out there, so.
But there is the, oh, uh, let me, let me make a call to the neighbor. It's not Hirschburgers. Because I know they've got the, they do have a little cross, cross cut and then the other neighbor, the gun dealer from Don Drescher has a driveway where you can sit and just calm traffic, so to speak. But let me talk to them.
Yep, no problem. We'll, we'll take care of it.
All right, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded, all those signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, chief. Have a good night.
Thank you, John, you as well.
Yep, all right, moving forward from the police, uh, commission report. Now to the Joint Rec Authority report, Mr. Kevin Dietz.
Good evening, gentlemen. How are you?
Great.
We're well, thank you. On, uh, February first, the Joint Rec Authority met. Um, there were six present. We, first order of business was to call meeting order by me, uh, which was my first meeting. Um, the second order of business was to make a, a motion was made for Jan Dietz to be the pool manager. It was unanimous between four of the six members. Two were reclusive because of relation. Um, that was passed. So that was the first thing of agenda. Um, second thing that we've been doing is the two thousand twenty-three mailing has been sent out to all the members from two thousand twenty-one. We have received great response in the pool opening. Um, we have been interviewing lifeguards, which I'll go over in a little bit. Um, we've been going to the schools for lifeguards, kind of the community college. Um, also, we would like to put an ad in the penny power. Um, this past month has been a very, very busy month, which I don't know if you gentlemen have been going by or not, but, um, the half wall that was all graffitied is now down, is now down. Um, that is, was voted on to be a sand volleyball court. The tennis court that was there that was used for the skateboarders and was basically being, you know, graffitied. That was cleaned up, um, and is now going to, which I'll go into a little bit, was going to be, we're looking at putting in, um, three pickleball courts, um, and doing some other renovation to it and upgrades. Um, we're also looking at, um, cleaning up the basketball courts, getting new backboards there because there is people that come up and play that. Um, that being said, um, we took a walk around, we were looking and we found out that the shed, the big shed that's on the backside by the pump house had, had a five by five hole in it. So that is over, apparently over twenty years old, so that was basically, everything in there was basically wasn't salvageable, was already rotted and gone, so, um, that was taken down because basically everything was getting ruined. We moved everything, put underneath the tarp, so that was done. With that being said, um, donations so far, um, which Janet talked to you last month about, we had hooked up the lights for um, Grandview Hospital used the parking lot. All that was donated. That came out to seventeen hundred and eighty dollars for a donation to do that. Um, the wall, the court and the shed, um, the track-o with all that work, the dumpster. Um, we use stone where the old YMC foundation was. And we actually were having a container, um, excuse me, donated. Instead of putting a shed that'll rot again, we're gonna put a container, um, because that's basically, it can be moved whenever we need it. So that, and we also have a donation to rebuild the pump inside the chemical room. That being said, so far to date, it's been nineteen thousand, twenty dollars in donations. That's caused, that has cost nothing to either Sellersville or West Rock Hill. Um, that being said, the sand volleyball court, um, the dirt that's gonna go around that and also the old YMC building is all going to be donated. So that will not be a cost to, to anybody. Um, so moving on. With that, to date, from the pool manager, we have hired thirteen lifeguards. We have four that we are going to be interviewing. We have hired seven front desk applicants. We have one roundskeeper handyman. As to date, we have four day camps signed up to use the property. Um, we do have our first own and dine, or excuse me, dine and donate to use the property. Um, we do have our first own and dine, or excuse me, dine and donate at the White Horse Hotel. That is gonna be February twenty-third. We were asking if, we are all asking for the township supervisors and, um, Sellersville Borough Council to come out and just show a presence if they possibly can. Um, we do have-
Kevin, can I hold, can I stop you there a minute? Can you give me that date again, please?
Yes.
February what?
February twenty-third, and it's gonna be from, um, five P M. to nine P M. At the West Rock Hill, uh, excuse me, at the White Horse. They call it the White Horse. Sorry.
Thank you.
Um, so at our first meeting, my goal for this year is to get everything up and running, making sure there's no problems. I would like to have the pool filled by May first. So we came up with three work dates, um, which is gonna be from ten A M. to two P M. And the first one is gonna be March eighteenth of two thousand twenty-three. The second one would be March twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-three. And the third one would be April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, all at the same time. Um, and what we do is we are having, um, a lot of volunteers asking to come and help, which is great. We can always use more. I know a lot of people want to see this pool succeed, and we have got nothing but positive, um, people coming. We actually have people coming to the meetings now and, you know, giving us their input. So we are looking, we are looking at that. Sorry, I have my throat. I need D G today, so my throat's a little raspy. So, um, that being said, the, everything with the sand volleyball court and all that that we're putting in and tearing down, that was all donated. Um, I am having the fence redone in the back of the tennis courts right now. That is also gonna be donated. That's part of the price. Um, we did look into, um, doing some other work which is going to be donated. Um, one is we're putting a new countertop inside the, uh, office. That's gonna be donated by a local contractor. And basically, that is everything as far as donations. One thing, there's a couple of things that are going to cost, which we, we are going to need is we need to have the slab port on top of the old Y M C building, because that's gonna be, eventually will be a pavilion. Um, we also, um, are having crack filled and sealed. The cost of the slab and the slab work down where the electric was done is gonna be about eleven thousand dollars. Um, the basketball court to add the crack filled and sealant and lined is twenty-one hundred dollars. Um, the pickleball, pickleball courts, badminton court, excuse me, is gonna be, um, and that is to fill the cracks, do the lining, and do all that stuff, and that is gonna be approximately sixty-eight hundred dollars. So with that being said, um, that's where we're at right now. And, um, do you have any questions for me?
I have one myself, Kevin. Uh, the, the items that you just identified there as far as the wishes to be done. Will you be, will you be generating revenue first before you do, before you do any of them? Or you be doing them as you, as you get money?
Well, this, yes, we, yes, we are, yes. But some, some of the stuff that I do need done is gonna involve some of the capital improvement money.
Then, and the feasibility study that we were having done, is that where we stand with that right now?
Well, Gilmore and the Associates cannot do it because they are not a architectural engineer. They do not do that. So we are going back to the gentleman that did it in two thousand twenty, uh, two thousand ten, and he is working on it right now. Um, but he, he said that we're working out a price with him right now. So we are still working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, we, we are waiting on, we are waiting on the skimmers to be, which is also part of what needs to be done, so the pool doesn't leak. And I don't have that. I was hoping to have that number for you right now, but I don't. But I mean, just off a rough guess, I think it's gonna be about six thousand dollars, which would also be, which would also be capital improvement money.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Dietz at this time?
I have a comment, uh, from me, David Collingwood. Uh, Kevin, first of all, um, really good effort so far on the, on the lifeguards and the front desk. Uh, that's, I think that's really good news. Uh, a question I have is you're talking about getting a slab port on the old Y M C A building and the, and the pickleball court. Uh, I'm correct, a couple of years ago, uh, when some work was done on the pool and there was some major jackhammering done and some cracks filled, uh, we reached out to Landis Block, and they did a lot of that, um, just for the, for the, for the community at no cost. So i- if you're going to be doing that, I suggest that you, you reach out to them. They, they may be able to help you.
Okay, that's, that's well taken. Yes, absolutely. Yes, I know when the pool piping was done, I donated the pipe for that.
Okay.
So I do know that.
All right, thank you.
Right.
My, my, my only last question is, is to the supervisors is, um, are we to, I mean, we already are gonna be in February. Are we going to be getting the capital improvement money so I can start budgeting when I can do for like the skimmers and stuff like that, that I know I have it?
How many lifeguards do you need to open the pool? You say you have thirteen hired.
We have thirteen. We have, right now, we have three applicants. We have three interviews tomorrow, and we still have, we haven't opened up the emails from today, so.
In order, in order to open the pool, how many lifeguards will you need?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yep. And technically, I'm really gonna be close. And we have seven desk hires, front desk people, which are going to be doing the trash in the bathrooms, so that way the lifeguards don't have to do that.
So you should know by the end of this week whether you're gonna have the eighteen or not. Is that what you're saying?
I can, I can tell you the way, the way that Jan is moving, which you've dealt with Jan for a year. She's a mover and a shaker, and I would say yes, by the end of this week, um, you should have everything you need.
I'm gonna hold my, my commitment to, to see, or to, to know that you have the proper amount of lifeguards to open that pool.
Okay.
At this-
Okay.
Mr. Collingwood, you have any-
No, I, no, I agree with that. That's why I asked how many, thirteen is a great number. And that's why I asked how many you need to open, and, and if you're gonna know with a week, uh, that's all well and good, but let's just finish the job, and then we, in my mind, we'll move on from there.
So like if in two weeks, if I get them, and then I email Greg and let him know that I have everybody, and he could-
Yes, yes, but I, I, I would like you to also keep in mind the difference between things that are necessary and things that are wants. Um, some of the projects that you talked about there may not have to be done in order to run the pool. Our, our goal and mission is to be able to have the pool so it functions, and that's what people want when they buy tickets, right? Uh, and having the, having the amount of lifeguard is what you need. Uh, you know, money spent on a pad board or a shed or something like that, 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 that has nothing to do with the function or the pool, the pool being open, correct? Or if it does, then we need to know that.
Well, I mean, the shed is part of storing everything for the pool chemicals and everything like that, yes, but I-
But you already, yeah, you have that donated, you said, the, 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 the unit, right, okay. All right, anything else?
Uh, yep, I did wanna follow up with, uh, one quick thank you to Kevin, who didn't mention that he's the one who got most of the donations, uh, and is currently the, uh, co-chair. I am the other co-chair, uh, along with Jan Dietz as the West Rock Hill representatives, and just mentioned the thank yous for Tony Buck and to, uh, Don Crowe, to Don Cavanmore and our, and, uh, Terry, uh, all of our members, but I did want to re- ask, what time are the workdays going to start?
From ten A M. to two P M.
Okay.
Okay. And officially, from my perspective, Kevin, I want to thank you and Jan and Cal and all members of the, of the, uh, authority for the efforts that have been put forward. You have definitely shown and proven that you're making s- great strides to, to try and help this pool.
Uh, I'm hoping it's gonna, it's not a hope, it's gonna be when, it's gonna be, we should be swimming by April first. So it'll be a little cold, but I guarantee it, come hell or high water, it's gonna happen.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. If that's a challenge, we'll all show up in bathing suits and do a polar veil, polar paradise.
Then you guys can be the grand opening poo bars.
Good fundraiser.
Yeah, there you go, fundraiser. All right, with that being said, I'll, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the, uh, joint rec authority. Before, all right, motion's been made.
Second, David Collingwood.
Second, all those signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you again, Mr. Dietz. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, uh, next on the agenda is the engineer's report, Mr. Steve Baller.
There we go. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the only item we have on my report tonight is the two thousand twenty-three stormwater culvert bid. Um, we hit that out, uh, publicly bid. We opened the bids on Monday. If you recall, uh, the main part of the project was the Old Bethel Pike, uh, culvert replacement that's near, um, the, uh, the pipeline crossing on the upper part of Old Bethel Pike.
Oh.
Uh, that was delayed or deferred from last year's project. And then we added, uh, several alternate, seven, seven potential alternate culvert locations. Uh, we had a budget of, uh, one hundred thousand dollars for the project. So I believe you have the summary was distributed. The base bid, which is the Old Bethel Pike culvert, was seventy-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Uh, the three additional culverts that we could do within the one hundred thousand dollar budget would be alternate two on Bont Road, alternate three on Thousand Acre Road, and alternate seven on Forest Road. That would be a grand total of ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. And the Passery and Sons Inc. was the, was the little bidder. Uh, Flingland also bid on the project.
Okay, thanks. Well, I do have a comment regarding the, the Forest Road one. I think that needs to be done because, uh, we need to finish that road where we stopped out to, to Bethel Pike, and, uh,
Yeah, I believe we ended up had it on the paving projects this year.
Yeah, yes, so that definitely needs to be done from my perspective, so I would encourage that, and, and, uh, I think that all the pipes that have been listed that you identified should be done from my perspective. Anyone else have any comments?
Especially Old Bethel Pike. It has to be done. That's just, it's a safety issue there.
So those are, the four picks are, um, wish of the board, we, we are to ask for a, a motion to conditionally approve contract for Passerian's on Stink in the amount of ninety thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for approval, or if not, I'll make-
There's, there's no other discussion. I'll make a motion to, um, accept that pipe bid for those four, for one, two, three, and seven.
Okay, motion. Okay, motion made in second. All those signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you. Okay. I have no other questions. The only thing I do want to thank you. Steve, I do want to thank you for, I did see the email for, um, I have, I identified Old Mill Road last month's meeting. Um, and that, I encourage my fellow supervisors to go run out there, please, and just take a look at that. We've gotta do something with that road. Uh, it's, I know it's in terrible shape, so that's gonna be a big ticket item, and I think that quote was over three hundred thousand dollars, right?
Yep. Right, and it, it may be something that's, uh, appropriate to, to, to do in stages. Uh, you know, get some of the, the culvert replacement and drainage work done first, and then come back, you know, potentially a second year and, and do the paving work.
Okay, we, we definitely need to look at that and maybe plan that out because, uh, the roads are important, and that road is, that road has been, not been, we've had some drainage issues there, and it's not been up to speed, so.
I'll work with Greg on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh, that section of road is, reminds me of the old condition of Thousand Acre with pieces sticking up through it. It's, it needs to be rebuilt, and it's costly to rebuild it, but that's what we've gotta get it, that's what we have to do to fix it.
Right. I did try, I did try to do something with the bridge with the state, or I should say the county. Um, and they're not, the, the county, the county stated that the bridge was in fine shape, so they're not gonna do anything with the bridge, so we, we can't raise weight limit on the bridge in order to change and go out to, uh, to, uh, the other way to Bethel Pike. So, got by Matt's heavy duty, so. Basically, we were forced to fix that road from, from the bridge out to, uh, Forest Road. All right, that being said, I will entertain a motion for approval of Steve's report.
Still moved, David Collingwood.
And seconded, hell, Shermer.
Thank you. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the solicitor's report. Mary Everly, how are you?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Um, I have three things under the solicitor's report. The first thing tonight is a resolution, um, authorizing the initiation of condemnation proceedings against a property that we want for park and open space purposes. Um, the Board of Supervisors had, was approached by a property owner who, um, is the owner of a property that is highly desirable because of its location, um, vis a vis our other parcels for, um, park and open space purposes. Because we're in the process, or because the board is interested in pursuing the acquisition of this property, the exact identity of the property will not be made public because until an agreement of sale is signed, um, identifying the property with specificity could adversely affect the board's ability to negotiate and move forward with the purchase of the property at fair market value. So, um, in your, in the board packets, although not part of the public meeting materials, is a resolution authorizing condemnation of this specific property. Um, following the adoption of this resolution, if you so choose to adopt it, um, Greg and I will attempt to negotiate a price for under the appraised value, at or under the appraised value that you received when Greg had an appraisal done on the property. If we are successful in doing this, we will bring an agreement of sale back to you at the next meeting. If we are not successful, we will talk to you in the interim about whether to proceed with full-blown condemnation proceedings. Um, I give you all of that detail to explain to the public why we're doing something that's a little bit out of the norm, and that's adopting a resolution without specifically identifying the property. This will come back at a public meeting in the future. The property will be identified before you purchase it, but during the negotiation stage, the identity of the property will be kept confidential.
Okay, thank you.
So the, if you're inclined to authorize Greg and I to proceed with, um, a amicable sale in lieu of condemnation, then you can make a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash oh five.
Okay, is there any interest from my fellow supervisors on this, moving forward with this project and adopting Resolutions twenty twenty-three oh five?
Uh, yes, I would, I think that it's a good, from the background, I think it's a good idea, uh, and for background for everybody watching, this is not that much different from what we did with the Moore Property, which is the big property behind the township building and the school, or the Zimba property at, uh, Forest Road and Lawn Avenue, or with some of the other properties that we acquired further down on Heffler Road as extensions or connections to the James Park, or similar what we had with when we first ended up getting James Park. Uh, but the township does have a vested interest in finding places and acquiring properties, and that's, you know, this is the way that we have to do this, so that we don't let everybody know which property we're talking about until we're done dealing with it, but it is an appraisal, which is a neutral idea of what the value is, so we're not benefiting any one person more than what an average price would be, but given the background, I think this is a good idea.
Okay, am I hearing that in the form of a motion, Hal?
Uh, sorry, yes, I would make a motion to.
Okay.
Uh, approve.
David?
I will second, I will second, uh, Resolution two oh two, three oh five.
Twenty twenty-three zero five, yes, okay. Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
I have it, Mary.
Thank you very much. Um, Greg and I will begin work on an agreement of sale in lieu of condemnation, and hopefully we can get this done amicably.
Okay.
Um, the next item on the solicitor's report is a track, traffic signal maintenance agreement to, um, that the community has observed, I'm sure in the last year, have, are coming to fruition. Um, Pendot is making major improvements on three oh nine, and the Grandview Hospital is in the, involved in a major campus expansion. Part of Grandview Hospital's requirements were to do some work on the exit lanes and the off-ramps of three oh nine on- Part of Grandview Hospital's requirements were to do some work on the exit lanes and the off-ramps of 309 onto Lawn Avenue. As part of this, we have to execute a new traffic signal maintenance agreement for the, for the signals that that intersect Lawn Avenue, especially the right-hand turn lane onto Lawn Avenue from 309. And to do that, there's a, there's a traffic signal maintenance agreement that's the form that Pendot wants us to sign, but you need to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of that agreement. They want both signed agreement and a resolution of the board authorizing it. So if that is acceptable to you, you would make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-06.
Okay, all right. We've all heard that. I think we all understand that. I've been trying to get something done there for years. Uh, I believe that is a very long, lengthy light, and the right turn signal has to be addressed so that traffic can flow better than when it is flowing. I'd make a motion myself, actually, to adopt Resolution 2023-06. Is there any other questions before we ask for a second?
No questions.
Having had to rock back and forth two or three times with the car to finally trigger the darn thing, I will second it. Aye.
And Steve, thank you very much. The third thing on the solicitor's report this evening is a resolution granting conditional preliminary slash final approval to the Klein subdivision. You, the applicant came before you at the last meeting. You went through this very simple subdivision with, with Steve Bala and the applicant's engineer from Scott Neese's office at the last meeting. There's a short resolution by, in like, in terms of how long our normal resolutions are, three pages long, giving the conditions of approval. It's in your packet. You are familiar with the condition. You want to grant the conditional final approval of the, the Klein subdivision on Green Top Road. You could make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-07.
Any thoughts, gentlemen?
I would make a motion to adopt 2023-07 based on last month's meeting and the planning commission meetings that I've attended.
Okay, motion's been made?
I will second that based on, you know, since as the lead is on to the planning commission, listened to the meeting and agree that it makes sense. Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, Mary.
Thank you very much. That's all I have this evening.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along here then. Uh, next on the agenda is the manager, Mr. Lippincott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only have one item. Um, the board asked to put together some ideas about going back to public meetings. And in your packet is a draft memo about going back into public meetings. I'll briefly go over the draft of my ideas that I came up with. West Rock Hill Township will go back in person's meeting, in, back into person meetings, the latest at May 9th, 2023. For the Township Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors will meet back in person May 17th. The board may go back sooner if the hybrid meeting room is completed sooner than May 9th. That way, we'll, there's a definite date that the board knows when we'll be going back. The second item is the maximum capacity of the meeting room will be a total of 55 people. Third item, masks will be optional. Uh, number four, once the persons are, have in-person meetings, the township will no longer take public comment via email. You'll have to either be in person, speak on a phone, or through the Google Meet. Um, once a hybrid meeting room is set up, people who wish to participate via Google Meet will have to register before 4:00 PM the day of the meeting. And that was, those were my ideas for the board to discuss.
Okay. All right. Well, my perspective is I, I don't want to wait till May. I think that we need to get back to meetings and my deadline personally is April. So I am open for discussion from David and Hal, but I believe that, that we need to get back in person as soon as possible. And there are concerns, and Greg has identified some of them. And I do, we can take, I know we can take proper steps to do that. So I am open to hearing thoughts.
Uh, if I may say something.
You may.
I, I, I agree that we should go back and we should go back full-time. The question that I have is the value added of returning in April versus May. And I'm, I'm thinking that science should be the, the driver here. Uh, we would be far, uh, further into the summer season or spring season, um, and the COVID season will be over, flu season will be over. Uh, we'd have a higher potential for having the hybrid room completed, set up and ready to go. And if the hybrid system is available sooner, we could even actually go back easily in April, but my thoughts would be to go back on May 9th for the planning commission, May 17th for the supervisors' meeting.
Okay, Hal?
Uh, well, I don't, I think that we can probably, we should be able to do April. We have some of the early stuff on the YouTube channel that we have a video of prior meetings before we went to the online versions of this. So we still have the prior setup, which we can kind of limp through for one month or two months until the newer versions of the setup are put in. We would still have the meetings available online. I do think it makes sense to, you know, at least to allow people or to include emails during the meeting time or up to the close of the meeting as comments. I don't think we have a huge number of them, but it still lets people, you know, make, it still makes sense to me to have some people be able to put their thoughts into writing and submit them so that they are included along with the other comments and information, because some people are better speakers when they write it down than when they try to phone in. I do kind of still think that we should have the, you know, the login times or the comment times now up until the time of the meeting or until a reasonable time beforehand before we send out a link for the meeting. I'm not sure if the streaming can, if it's, if the live stream to YouTube is going to be as effective, but given those multiple concerns, I think, yeah, we can do this in April and we can, if it needs to be, we can use the old cameras, which are kind of fuzzy but don't, aren't as clear. And then anybody, everybody who's actually watching it online will be much more pleased by how much better it looks when we get there into, uh, into May.
Okay. All right, hearing your comments, I'm going to make a motion that we return to public meetings in April. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion further? Okay. All those signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. I'd like to try and get this thing back onto track, Greg. We're only going to be, we're only going to be maybe one month short of your, of your new hybrid system, but I think we can handle it.
Are you okay with the maximum capacity of the meeting room being 55 people?
Absolutely. It's first come, first served.
Okay, and then
When that meeting room is filled up, that is it. That's all you can take in. The rest of the people will have to be online.
And the thing is, I have to comment on number five. There's some things that I have to do between 6:30 and 7:00, which are very easy for me to do when we're doing this remotely. When we go back to in-person meetings, I'm usually with the board between 6:30 and 7:00, and I won't be able to do those things to set up people getting in if they don't sign up before 4:00 PM. And the reason why I put it at 4:00 PM is because I won't have time between 6:30 and 7:00 to do certain things to let them in. I will look during the meeting and let them in afterwards, but to guarantee that they can get in Google Meet, they almost have to do it before 4:00 PM.
I'm comfortable with it.
That, that's the reason why it was 4:00 PM, just so I can make sure that they get in. I always check after the deadline to let people in, but I, it's just impossible for me to be in person and doing the remote thing at the same time for number five.
I hear you. I understand that. And my, my motion was made enabling you to be able to do that. So I, I will support that, and I think that that has to happen.
Yep, yeah, and sorry for making Greg work harder than he already does. But yeah, that, I fully understand that idea of not having any lead time and somebody's trying to get into a meeting and, okay, we got make this work. So I guess that's a better version of, you know, it's a better reminder to everybody who's watching these, and we have 21 people on that, you know, please let everybody know early before the meeting, and if somebody else wants to come in online, that's good, but it might take a little while before we can get you processed.
Hey, it's, it may, it may be a learning curve for a little bit there, but we'll, we'll get through it. Okay? All right, what else do you have, Greg?
That's all I have.
Most, motion's been made and seconded, and we all signify by saying aye, so it does carry.
Yep.
Let it be official, we will go back to in-person meetings in April. Okay. Moving forward?
Does that?
You have anything else?
The, do we want to encourage our subcommittees to do the same?
No, I was, I was, I was still comfortable with them going back in, in May.
Okay.
In April, we want to do the, we want to have the supervisors' meeting in person in April, and, and we will go back to the subcommittees in May.
All right.
Which is basically the planning commission, right, Greg?
Yeah, it's only the planning commission and the board that meets virtually.
Okay, very good. All right, I'll entertain a motion for approval on the manager's report.
So moved David Collingwood.
Motion's been made?
And seconded, Hal Schirmer.
Seconded. All those signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Next thing we have on the agenda is old business. Mr. Schirmer, you, I see your light on. Do you want, you have old business?
Uh, well, yes, we had, uh, we had a actually good question in old business last week, although it was a little bit pointed. But I did want to mention that the reason, one of the reasons that I was looking at one of the questions from last month was whether, why I was focusing on trails and parks, and a particular person was a little bit bent out of shape about trails and parks. It took me a little bit to finally figure out because I think of the property as belonging to Ms. Bean, not the new owner, because it's been a couple of years. So I did want to point out that the reason that we have the parks and the trails, and the reason that I usually bring up parks and trails is for the last, you know, 25 years, coming up on a quarter century, when I was on the Open Space Committee, we've been trying to figure out ways of making it easy to walk from James Park over to Holiday House, over to Grandview Hospital, walk or bike from out, from James Park down to the Indian Valley, the Indian Valley Library Complex, the Sports Complex, Landises, and Telford. So, uh, the reason that I was mentioning having trails that would connect through and along Lonely Road is that 25, 30 years ago, we have plans to have a walking trail along Lonely Road. Uh, 15 years ago, the township purchased a property which was called, which is known as the Moore Property, so, which is going to be added to and is open space, taxpayer-funded. So it won't be developed, so that becomes a benefit to the properties along Lonely Road because behind them, they're not going to have any development. They might have some soccer fields eventually. They might have baseball fields eventually. But the reason that I brought up the open space issue and the trails issue is that we've been thinking about this stuff for 25 to 30-something years, and we want to make sure that that stuff gets put in place and that project, those projects get done as we move along. Personally, to answer the question that was posed, I couldn't care less where the actual route goes. When I was a kid, I rode from Naysville out to Almont, out to the old, uh, West Rock Hill Elementary School because they had a faucet and it was easy to go through, get a drink, come back, go down to Sellersville, stop up, bike up the hill, go, come back. So the reason that I've been looking at trails isn't because it's imperative just to have trails for the sake of having trails, but these are connections we've been thinking about for 20, 30 years, and it's important to actually try to link them up when we get a chance to.
Yeah. Well, Hal, I do want to thank you for, I, I do want to clarify though. It was, I think that comment was made under public comment. I think it was sent in an email that Greg read. And I will, I will share, as you know too, um, I've been around long enough to know this. The Moore property had, already has a proposed trail around it, uh, whether that gentleman who wrote, uh, wrote that public comment and knows it or not, but the Moore Farm will have a trail around the outside of it when the funds become available to construct that. And when that, when that farm there gets developed, incorporated into our park, which it is a part of, and it has been and, and is on our park plan. So
Yep, that was, yep, and that's a lot, you know, that was part of the long, long, long-term decision, because going back to the 1990s, I think there was, there were proposals to have a connection from the James Park down to the Indian Valley Library and that park system, which would use the right-of-way for the power lines that go, that come through Lonely Road just south of Lonely Road in Jesmont, which would be away from everybody. And then once we actually purchased the Moore Farm and protected all of the owners of the prop, and basically all the owners on the east side of Lonely Road above the zigzag, got the benefit that there's not going to be any development behind them. You're not going to have townhomes. You're not going to have anybody behind you, just, the open field's going to continue to be open. Along with that came the idea that, well, people want to actually enjoy the open space that taxpayer money is paid for, and the usual way of doing that is to have some kind of trail so that people can walk and jog and walk their dogs and take their kids and enjoy this. So there are two different trails. One is a long-term or a long-distance one that is, yeah, this is a way that, you know, kids can ride a bicycle or people can jog from James Park down to the Indian Valley Country Club and come back, which I've actually done a couple of times because that was my usual routine for getting the car inspected down at Killers is I throw my bike in the trunk, drop the car or back off, and then, you know, ride back from Telford, come up Quarry Road, go up Lonely Road, come back along. So
Okay.
It's a, it's not a particular concern, but I just want to make it clear that we don't, that in the, in the big point, we don't care where the trails go. But this is, we have people who want to walk and we'd like to make it easier so you don't get run over trying to walk or ride on Ridge Road.
Well, we, we have had a trail planned, so I just want to clarify that. That's, that's true. The trails have, have been identified many years ago, and they haven't acquired all the properties, but we are in the process of that. So there is a trail plan in place in this township that we, that we are trying to stick with. That being said, there, is there any other old business? Mr. Collingwood, do you have any old business?
I have none. I have none, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Um, new business? Anybody have any new business? Saying done? All right. Greg, before I have a public comment, we, do we need an executive session on, on Real Estate Matter tonight? Are we good?
No, we do need an executive session for real estate tonight.
Yep, I, I thought so. We had a, we had, we have to discuss that, that, that one issue. Is there any public comment on tonight's meeting? Is, if there is public comment, please state your name and address, and I'll look for
I have, I have one to read. Shirley Miller Fishing Derby, does it include 12-year-olds?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. You can fish to 12. When you're 13, you're over the limit. But 12-year-olds, we welcome But twelve-year-olds, we welcome. Bring it on. Hopefully, it'll be a nice day. Okay, there is one here. Uh, I think that's Mr. Schirmer.
Uh, yes, um, I think just to respond to Hal's comments and follow up on what you just said. I believe we do have the trail systems that we'd like to be putting in marked off in the comprehensive plan. So um Mr. Schirmer could probably look at the comprehensive plan and see what's been set aside for a trail system so far. Maybe we can always entertain more trails, but I think we need to then sort of formalize it a little bit in a comprehensive.
Okay, thank you. Greg, is that is that comprehensive plan? Is that on a website? Do we have that on a website somewhere? Or not?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So so the public, the public could actually. Yep, that somebody could actually look at that if they wanted to and see where the where the trails are identified or where our plan is. Okay, thank you.
There's comprehensive plan and there is also, I believe that the West Rock Hill Trails in Greenways Plan from like twenty thirteen is on there somewhere.
Correct, that's on there too.
Regional Plan from something, something, and then there's the nineteen ninety-nine uh, Open Space Plan, all shows where worth where we were looking at trails. So it's kind of like we've been doing, we've been talking about this for twenty-something years. It's not a, it's not that we're trying to annoy one particular resident. It's you, we've been thinking about this for years and years and years and years and years.
Okay, thank you. I do see Chris, I think, Chris Durstine. You you there?
I am, yeah, yeah, Chris Durstine, twenty-six ninety Old Weston Pike. Uh, I just want to clarify that the Planning Commission, the first in-place uh Planning Commission meeting will be in May, not April.
That is correct.
Okay, you guys get to track the ice? And I'll be in behind you then. All right, good enough. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, uh, I have uh, let's see here, who who's my next one? Chris? Greg, I'm I'm missing one.
Christine Shelley still.
Christine, I think was before, Kevin. Christine?
Okay, thank you very much. Um, good evening. Christine Shelley, Wayland Road in Quakertown. Um, I just wanted to make some comments about the meeting last night, the Planning Commission meeting. Um, I, you know, all of this talk about trails is wonderful. I think it's a great part of um of the overall plan, but I think that we need to be mindful of trees as well. I I hear these developers coming in and they want these waivers and they want to be exempt from um from things that were set in place a long time ago. And I hear developers saying things like, well, we we're having a white roof because that's a thermal effect. Um, and we're just trying to look at what we can realistically plan. Um, there's twelve ninety-eight, there's one thousand two hundred ninety-eight trees that are needed for the plan, but we only have planned two hundred and one trees to to plant. Um, and then they start asking if the intent is to create a forest. They're only able to, because of the size of the parking lot, they're only going to be able to meet fifteen percent of the requirement. Um, they want like conditional approvals before traffic studies are in. They need three acres of trees planted. They're two acres short. And I just want to know, like, why are we accepting fee in lieu of trees? I think trees are really important. As important, if not more important, than these trails. I think these trails are great. But um I would just like us to be mindful of the fact that when you cut down trees and when you try to plant new trees, it actually takes a really long time. I think that's something like thirty years for the um, the to have the same um, the same effect on the environment, that um baby trees do not do the same work as um, you know, old forest trees. So I just want us to be mindful and just to please consider and think about um, you know, eh, not not allowing these developers to come in and fee in lieu of trees. I just, I just don't think it's a really good idea. Um, and that's my comment. Also, somebody asked me to give update on the compressor station, and I will just say that I don't uh, they, I think that the report this month said that they just finished completing.
Two and a half minutes are up.
Okay.
Do you want me to comment on the compressor station or until next month?
Wait until next month, please. You're you're.
Okay, sure thing. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you for your comments, Christine. Uh, your comments will be taken uh very seriously. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Dietz, you were next.
That's Kevin Dietz, fourteen twenty Ridge Valley Road. Um, the only question I got for you is you guys are talking about doing in-person meetings now. Um, you said, and I know we only have, like Hal said, twenty-one people on here, but you said first come, first serve. I'm hoping since I'm on the committee and everybody, commissioner's report, and I have to give a, you know, a meeting, I'm hoping that you guys take into consideration that we get, we're allowed to come into it where we get booted out.
No, you you you're you're a committee person. You will be, you will have a seat.
That's that's what I'm saying. What you said, first come, first serve, and I went, you know, somebody gets it, yeah.
And I apologize. Thank you for clarifying.
No, no, no problem. I just want to make sure that you guys say, well, I got fifty-five. Sorry, you can't do it this month. So that's all I'm worried about. Not that you'll get fifty-five, I hope, but you know.
You you have to be able to give your report.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Got it. Okay.
We will officially have velvet rope for Kevin around the backside.
About time.
Yeah. All right, I don't see any other hands, Greg. So, oh, there is one. Anthony? You're on, Anthony.
Um, Mr. Chairman Jay, um, I i- if it's not a problem, I'd like to hear the update on the compressor station. I know Christine lives nearby. Could, I know you cut her off. Can can you just, can we have an update? She lives right by there. It came across Planning Commission last night. Um, but could we just?
I'll allow her two minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and hopefully Christine didn't leave.
She's there. Yeah, I see your name.
I'm there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure, um, they were supposed to do um an a full load noise, I I think noise impact study, and they they weren't able to do so, and the reason was is that they didn't have they had to wait until winter because the necessity wasn't there to push the product through the pipes, which kind of puts to question the public need, but whatever. Um, they finally did the study and I think that they exceeded it. So now they're, they exceeded the um the cap of the noise requirements. So now they're having engineers come in um, who are going to, I guess, look at the situation and figure out how they can mitigate um, the the noise. Um, so I, it's my understanding that, yes, they have um, they've tested all of the equipment and that I I forget the word, the term that they use for um, putting them into commission. They're ready to go, but I don't know that they're, I don't know how much or what if they are running anything through because it's kind of been a mild winter, but so I I don't know. I I I haven't gotten that far, but that's that's the update as I know. They finally did the noise load. Uh, the full load noise requirement study, um. But I I don't know if there's anything going through there, and we're still waiting for um for court verdict. So that's all I know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing seeing no other uh public comments, I will entertain a motion for adjournment and move into executive session.
I will adjourn.
Okay.
And second a section.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye, aye. Thank you all for joining our meeting. Very much appreciated. See you next month.
Thank you.